I'd like to call the order, the Monday, February 1st, 2010, Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, we have Reverend James Steele from the New Beginnings Assembly of God to lead us in our invitation.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for our great county. We thank you for what you have done to make this county a lighthouse to the state and a beacon of hope. We know as a, our forefathers knew, and scriptures tell us, righteousness exalts our land, but sin is our reproach to any people. And so today, we ask for forgiveness for our sins, that as we as a people, as a county today, we search wisdom and guidance in all that takes place in this room tonight. We ask that you to be the light on our path as we protect the men and women today who serve in this place. We ask you to lead them as you lead us to protect Currituck County. In Jesus's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. We have Boy Scouts through 182 here tonight to lead us in our pledge of allegiance while they're coming forward. If everyone would stand.
The pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all.
This time, I'd like to read a resolution recognizing 100 years of Boy Scouts in America. Whereas, Boy Scouts of America was incorporated by Chicago publisher William Boyce on February 8th, 1910, after learning of the scouting movement during a visit to London. Whereas, on July, on June 21st, 1910, a group of 34 national representatives met, developed organizational plans, and opened a temporary national headquarters in New York. Whereas, the purpose of Boy Scouts of America is to teach Americans youth patriotism, courage, self-reliance, and kindred values. Whereas, by 1912, scouts were enrolled in every state, and in 1916, Congress granted Boy Scouts of America a federal charter. Whereas, each council will commit each Boy Scout to perform 12 hours of community service yearly, totaling 30 million community service hours each year. Whereas, membership since 1910 totals more than 111 million Boy Scouts and is founded in 185 countries around the world. Whereas, the organization presented the 2,000,000th Eagle Scout Award in 2009. Whereas, more than 1 million adult volunteer leaders, selflessly serve young people in their communities through organizations chartered by the Boy Scouts of America, often neither receiving nor seeking the thanks of the public. Whereas, February 8th, 2010 would be an appropriate day to designate as Boy Scouts of America Day in celebration of the Boy Scouts of America's 100th anniversary. And whereas, Boy Scouts of America endeavors to develop American citizens who are physically, mentally, and emotionally fit, have a high degree of self-reliance, as evidenced in such qualities as initiative, courage, and resourcefulness, have personal values based on religious concept, have the desire and skills to help others, understand the principles of the American social, economic, and governmental systems, take pride in their American heritage, and understand our nation's role in the world, have a keen respect for the basic rights of all people, and are prepared to participate in and give leadership to American society. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners supports the designation of February 8th, 2010 as Boy Scouts of America Day in celebration of its 100th anniversary. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners commends the dedicated volunteer scout leaders and institution assisting the scouting programs for the benefits of the youth in our community. Adopted this first day of February, 2010, by the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to have a motion to
Remove.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. And also have a presentation to make to Mr. Frank Ruder. Who is Mr. Frank Ruder? Okay. Have a nice Currituck County flag. I don't know if any in the audience I don't know if anyone in the audience has ever seen their Currituck flag or not, but we do have a flag with their seal on it. I'm going to present that to Mr. Ruder on behalf of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners in recognition of 100 years of Boy Scouts in America. Let's give him a hand. We appreciate all that you do in the community. We're proud of you, and we know that we're looking at the future leaders of our great country. So, God bless each and every one of them.
Mr. Chairman, could we have them introduced to the audience?
Yes, you may. How about telling each, each of you telling who you are?
Go to the mic.
There you go.
I am Chris Ait.
Austin Robinson.
I'm Frank Ruder.
Anthony Garsky.
Jared Sawyer.
Scott Buggy.
I'm Dave Ulrich.
Thank you troop leaders for all you do as well. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, I'd just like to comment that the Girl Scouts brought cookies last week.
We appreciate what you do.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. And this might be inappropriate at the time, but I want to recognize Scott Buggy and David, our scout master, assistant scout master. Yes, sir. They're totally 100% volunteers. They don't have children in this troop, and they stay with us and dedicated their time to these scouts. So, I'd like to give a big hand to them.
I'm John Height.
Thank you very much. At this time, we seek approval of the agenda of deleting item four.
Move for approval.
Motion from Commissioner After, second from Commissioner Taylor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close light sign. This time, public comment. We have one gentleman signed up, Mr. Charles Berry. If you please do name and address for the record, and Mr. McCray will take the time.
My name is Charles Berry, and I live at 148 Edgewater Drive in Grandy. And I know you're passing the agenda for the golf carts tonight, and I'd like to speak in favor of that. And I do have a couple of questions. I was wondering about private roads. Would there be any stipulations on that as far as private roads? And would the property owners have to sign to vote on this? I know it says 67% of the people have to vote in the community for it. So, would the property owners have to vote, or would the people that live there have to vote? Because there's a lot of people in Walnut Island that does not live there. They, they live in Virginia and different places. So, how would that come back?
If you'll let me go ahead and answer those questions at this point.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
What is being proposed tonight, first of all, with regard to private roads? The ordinance was drafted to apply to public streets, roads, highways. In consultation with the Sheriff's Department over the last week, we thought it advisable to also, and I'm going to suggest to you when you to that point in your agenda, to add the words of public vehicular accesses, which would cover private roads and the use of golf carts on private roads as well. There are already a number of motor vehicle laws that can be and are enforced on roads that are privately owned because they are indeed public vehicular access areas. So, it would be in my opinion, if it's adopted in that way, then it will be applicable as well to private roads. It gives the Sheriff's Department the ability to enforce the use of golf carts under this ordinance on those streets. With regard to the manner in which the Board of Commissioners might designate an area for, an area of streets for use of golf carts, that was one of the concerns, of course, raised by this board at your last meeting, is perhaps not going ahead and adopting an ordinance that would right upon this adoption, open up every street in the county to the use of golf carts. And so, as I tried to mull over some method or process by which we might not open it up entirely, but allow different communities to come forward and petition to be designated an area for use of golf carts, more of a customized approach. It came to my mind to provide for a petition to be presented to the Board of Commissioners. I put in a number of 67% of residents and/or property owners. That's 67% being merely a placeholder until you all had a chance to discuss this. Commissioner Rohr has already indicated at the appropriate time, he may have some amendment to suggest. But as it's drafted right now, it would, it would provide for 67% of residents or, and/or property owners. So, that's say, a community on the Outer Banks that has maybe only a handful of residents, but many property owners. It would take 67% of all those persons combined in order to be able to petition the Board of Commissioners for designation of an area. That again, is just as it is proposed, and that may change when the Commissioners get to that tonight.
Okay. Just, I mean, you know, if the voters that registered in North Carolina, or that was what we were wondering about.
Yes. It is not intended just for those that may be residents and who may be registered to vote and eligible to vote in North Carolina. But it, but it, right now, it's drafted as such, it could be residents and property owners.
Okay.
I answered you, Mr. McCray.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Berry was the only one we have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that did not get a chance to sign up that wishes to speak on an issue tonight? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period. And move to item five. Public hearing in action on PB 99-13, Brady Landing, Phase 1, Lot 8A. Request for an amended preliminary plat special use permit for one additional lot adjacent to the Currituck County Airport and west of Brady Landing, Phase 1, Tax Map 52C, Parcel 8A Crawford Township. No one signed up for that. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this other than these two gentlemen, you need to come forward now. Okay, seeing none, put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Joe. This is an amended preliminary plat request for the Brady Landing subdivision. As you know, the Brady Landing subdivision is a residential airport adjacent to the Currituck County Regional Airport. The intent of the subdivision is to house the 12 property owners, not only that they live there, they live in a single family house, but also have access to the airport through the gates, so to speak, with their personal airports. This particular request is a 2-acre lot originally included in Phase 1 of Brady Landing. What they're proposing here is to cut that 2-acre lot, divide it into 2 1-acre lots. That would bring a total of 15 lots for Phase 1 of Brady Landing. You can see here, the zoning of the property is agricultural. It has the residential airport overlooking it, allows the increased density. Land use plan is against areas of general service. I would also note that we've adopted April Park, a small area plan, designates this particular area as residential. There's a site plan. It's a little difficult to see, but completely not a lot. It's basically a rectangle lot that's being divided into 2 1-acre lots. The original sketch plan, the value of this phase is approved on September
Excuse me. Was approved on September, couldn't have a microphone on. It was approved in September of 2004. In the, in the case analysis, you can see the special use permit criteria and staff findings. I'm not going to go through all of those. Staff, after review of this request, does recommend approval of the subdivision request. There are three conditions included in the case analysis that staff recommends. The planning board heard this case at their January meeting, and they also recommended approval of the request. If you have any, any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
If you want to have any questions, Mr. Woody. Hearing none, I'm going to book them to public comment. I'll see if Mr. Hyman had signed up, and either of you gentlemen wish to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eddie Hyman with Hyman and Ruby, and I'm here to answer any technical questions that you might have. Like I said, we've met the requirements, and the three conditions that we put on there was the payment of the water tap fee, which was paid, and the, there was a correction on one of the certificates, and that's been done. Then the third was to have the restrictive covenants recorded simultaneously with the recording of the plat, and that will take place after the approval tonight.
So, you don't have a question, Mr. Hyman? Do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Motion for approval with conditions as outlined by Mr. Woody.
Motion for Mr. Jones, second on this table. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close light sign. Item six, PB 09-33, Dave Reese Code. Request for a preliminary plat special use permit for a 3-lot subdivision located on Knott's Island on Solo Lane, Tax Map 76, Parcels 108H and 95F, Fruitville Township. Also have the record of anyone signing up. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor or against this, you need to come forward now. Okay? Put your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make sure I keep my microphone on through this whole staff report. This is a request, again, another request for a preliminary plat special use permit. This is over in Knott's Island, off Woodley and Solo Lane. And the reason, the reason this is before you is a major subdivision. I do want to clarify is that there have been additional subdivisions on this property in the past. And as you know, once you get beyond 5 lots on a property, it then becomes a major subdivision, which does require approval from the Board of Commissioners. So, that's why this is here before you tonight. The zoning on this property is agricultural, as is the case with Knott's Island in its entirety. The land use plan designates this as limited service within the Knott's Island Gibbs Woods Subarea District. The total size of our tract here, if it's under consideration, is 12 acres, a little over 12 acres, and they're creating and proposing to create 3 residential lots. And what that does is, and to get some history, the sketch plan for this particular phase of this particular project was approved in October of '09. And now they're here before you with the 3 additional lots. One thing I do want to point out is, in this subdivision, this small, you're not, you're not required to dedicate open space. However, in this case, and it's a little hard to see, but the 3 lots that are being created have frontage on Solo Lane, which is a private 45-foot right-of-way. And then, to the, to the north of that, there is a open space dedication that goes out to the sound. So, what that, what that means basically are these lots that are being created along with the parent parcel actually have access to the sound via the open space that will exist. So, that's kind of a good feature about this subdivision. Solo Lane itself is required to meet NCDOT requirements. Staff did require some additional work to be done to ensure that road is built to NCDOT standards. This is a special use permit, and the criteria and recommended staff findings for the SUP are located in your case analysis. I'm not going to read through all those. After review, staff did recommend approval of this request. And we did add some conditions related to correcting notes and certificates on the plat. And also, one thing I'll point out is requiring that, as this subdivision moves forward, that before it's recorded or goes to record, that the amended covenants or the restrictive covenants or the deed restrictions for the larger subdivision be amended to incorporate these lots to ensure that these folks are part of that homeowners association and therefore responsible for part of the maintenance and upkeep of Solo Lane. Planning board heard this case at their January meeting, and they also recommended approval of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
If you want to have any questions, Mr. Woody.
The, the Solo Lane did meet the state standards, correct?
It did. They, we asked the applicant to take a core sample and send that in. I'll let Eddie clarify or follow up on that question a little bit, but yes.
Okay. And then, at some point in the future, we would just petition DOT to take the, to add that to their system?
That, that would be an option, yes. They could ask the DOT to do that.
Okay. The open space that goes to the sound, is that specifically for the residents of the 3 new lots that's being cut out? Or is that for the existing lot owners that are there?
Since it's part of the subdivision, it would have to be for the subdivision.
Okay. Nothing else? Thank you.
Hearing none, Mr. Hyman, you have anything to add?
Just a question about the DOT standards.
Let me open the public hearing. Now, go ahead. That's open now.
Okay. I walked right through it.
Yeah. Walked right into it.
That's usually the case. The question came up, was the road built to DOT standards when it was constructed? And we looked at high and low for records, through my files, through the county's files, and we couldn't find any DOT. I did find some correspondence with DOT when the construction took place, but no certification. So, we had a new core sample done, a new compaction test on the stone underneath, and had an engineer's report. I got it today, but it took a while to get all the tests put back. But it meets the DOT standards according to the engineer's report we received today from G E T testing. So, we've met that criteria. The other issues or the conditions were minor changes, like a note on the plat from a flood zone and some things like that. So, Solo Lane, and it's held up real well. I've seen it over the years, so it's in good shape.
So, that will be sufficient for DOT to
The neighborhood will petition the county to petition DOT to take the road in. That's what happens when the neighborhood
This will suffice for DOT as we move along?
Yes. This will be the results they need to see. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 09-33 with finding of fact and staff recommendations, including the case analysis.
A motion from Mr. Idler. Approval, second from Mr. Rohr. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close light sign. Item seven, public hearing in action, PB 07-10, South Ridge, PUD. Request for an amended preliminary plat special use permit for 146 patio home lots, 5.46 acres of limited business hotel designation, and 1.75 acre county dedication community facility site located on Survey Road adjacent to Eagle Creek subdivision, Moak Township. I have 4 people that have signed up to speak. I ask that you come forward to be sworn in. I have George Winslow, John Bowman, Gary Werner, and Mark Dussel. If there's anyone else that wishes to speak on this agenda item, you need to come forward now. Okay, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another, our last preliminary plat special use permit request for the night. Development known as South Ridge. It's off of Survey Road, near the Eagle Creek subdivision and Keritoke Highway, kind of in between Eagle Creek and the highway there. And this request is actually an amended preliminary plat. So, this has, does have preliminary plat approval previously. And tonight, they're requesting to shift around some lot sizes and discuss options for wastewater, and I'll get into that stuff in a second. But this is an amended preliminary plat. Still, request is for 146 residential units. Size of the property is approximately 70, 74 acres. Land use plan designates the property as rural. I think when the original zoning was, was approved, some of the land use plan policies were used in that approval, or as part of that approval process. Density of this project is about 2.18 units per acre. Again, it's supposed to be 146 patio home units on 74 acres. Streets are curb and gutter, expected to be built to NCDOT design and construction standards. My understanding is the developer does intend to offer the streets for dedication to DOT once the project is underway or completed. Real quickly, I want to talk about open space. Required open space is 35% of the project. This plan provides exactly that, 35% of the project is open space. There's also a dedication of 1.75 acres that goes to the county. That's near the commercial area. Again, as a PUD, you do have a commercial component to this, which on your map there on the screen is to the right side of the map, closer towards the highway. Development will be served by county water. Also, as part of this plan, the developer is requesting that wastewater be located on the property. On the site plan there, on the, on the left side of the plan there, you can see the power line easement goes through there. And just to the left of that, the west, you see there is a, an area, and that's where they are proposing a wastewater treatment package plan, as we call it, and disposal. They have also submitted an option with this that would provide that if off-site wastewater or if Eagle Creek becomes available, then they could resubmit documents to the county and connect this, this project into the Eagle Creek wastewater treatment plant. I'll clarify, though, that tonight, what you're approving as far as a plan, is wastewater on this particular plan with the option that they can move it off-site if it provide additional documentation and get TRC approval. So, hopefully, that makes sense. Property was rezoned from agricultural to residential in '06. The overlay was added in 2007. Again, the purpose of this is to, is to provide an alternate means for wastewater and also to create what's called patio home lots. Patio home lots are smaller lots. It's a, it's a development style, I guess, kind of like townhomes in a sense, but they're detached. They're individual houses. But the patio home has been used primarily over at the beach and some of our subdivisions there. And usually, it's kind of mixed in with larger lots and commercial development. This particular case is exclusively patio home lots. But again, I'll say that the same number of units as it was the last time around, so we're still at 146. They propose phases for this development. It's got 4 phases. The first 3 are combinations of lots and open space and recreation amenities. Right now, they've got Phase 4, or the last phase is being the commercial development. There are SUP or special use permit criteria and findings in your case analysis. Again, I'm not going to read through those. Those are in there. Also, there is a number, a number of conditions in this that staff's recommended. A lot of those carry over from previous special use permits, and a lot of those relate to things such as transportation improvements that NCDOT is going to require. They are going to have to, to make some intersection improvements and even make some improvements out of Keritoke Highway to accommodate this, per NCDOT's recommendation. There's conditions related to, if, if they explore the option of having wastewater moved off-site to Eagle Creek, there's lists of criteria they have to meet to do that. Again, tonight, what you're really approving is the idea of wastewater on the South Ridge development site. But should they explore moving it off to Eagle Creek or some other system, there are a number of options they have to pursue and get TRC approval and get state permits and so forth and so on. We have, we have conditions relating to the look and the feel, how, how the houses look, the kind of materials they use, pedestrian trail systems, sidewalks. Typically, when you have a development that has smaller lots such as this, such as this, that's when items like sidewalks and trail systems and playgrounds become more important. So, we have conditions relating to that. I've had some conditions relating to the development, the commercial development and architectural standards for that. And after the review, staff, staff does find this, does find this request to be consistent with the U D O, and we are recommending conditional approval of the request, subject to the, to the conditions that are in the staff report. The planning board heard this request at their January meeting, and the planning board did recommend denial of this request. The planning board's reasons for denial, number 1 was traffic concerns. Number 2 was increased development. If wastewater moved to Eagle Creek, the idea behind that is that if they did abandon the wastewater on the South Ridge property and send it to Eagle Creek, that would free up an additional 6 or 7 acres that they could develop. However, I will say that if they choose to develop that 6 or 7 acres, they still have spaces outside of the garage does meet the minimum requirement. I would consider staff, I would consider the parking in the garage to count as parking. I think the planning board's point was that the way people use garages nowadays is they pretty much just use it for storage, it don't actually park in it. But from a technical standpoint, I would say they have four parking spaces provided. But I still, you know, the planning board still felt like additional spaces were needed.
But that was outside of what is required by the UDO?
It, it is, it is outside of what's required by the UDO.
It's technically legal, the UDO requires parking.
They, they do, and, and Mr. Bissell will talk to this, but I, I think they, they have tried to accommodate the planning board, I think they've tried to design the streets in a way that'll also allow some on-street parking as a relief, so they, they've made an effort, I think, to come around to that.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Woody. I'll open the public hearing. We have Mr. Winslow. Find him up first. I just please give your name and address for the record, sir. And Mr. McCray will be the keeper of the clock.
My name is George Winslow. I live in Charleston, Virginia. The adjacent farm, DeLindsay Farm, is what I'm here to speak about. I didn't realize this went back to 2006, but I made every hearing I could, the only time I didn't make is because of the weather, which was almost today as well. I talked with the, the gentleman who first brought this, this land into consideration, Mr. Chip Friedman, and now I've talked with Mr. Bissell over the years, and I've talked with who's the gentleman developing the property. My major concern right now is, my concern's been dropped. When I came to the planning board is when I realized absolutely nothing had been done concerning my, my concern of a, of a buffer, other than, property's been set aside for a buffer, but an open buffer, when you have a farming operation, an open buffer doesn't do a thing, not a thing. You've got to have some physical barrier in that buffer, otherwise the dust, the chemicals are going to sift on into the homeowner's property, and the more homes you have, the more wall you're going to have, the more it's going to hit the homes, it's going to fall down in their yards, get all over everything. Kid, without some kind of physical barrier, kids are going to get over into the active farmland. That's, that's a major concern, kids and animals. I've killed my share of birds with, with discare. Don't want to kill any dogs and don't want to kill any kids. So there needs to be something other than just an open barrier, which might look great visibly, but does no good, does absolutely no good. And likewise, I don't understand why the county doesn't have some kind of buffering system already established where a residential area encroaches into active farming land. That's going to happen, I understand that's going to happen, that there isn't some kind of provisions in your, your ordinances to have or require a, a buffering system. Eventually, this is going to be all residential and, and commercial, I know that. I have nothing against the residential coming in next door, nothing whatsoever, but my concern is there is no active buffer, other than, than just a strip of land set aside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Woody, is, is he correct that just open land is the buffer, there is no requirement of trees or shrubs?
Yeah, he's basically correct. There, there isn't, there isn't really a buffer requirement. Now, what's, what's proposed on the site plan at this point is, is what's called a type C buffer, and, and to make, and, and that isn't really much of a buffer, to be honest with you, so no, that, that would be, to me, a shortcoming of our ordinance. I anticipate that Mr. Bissell will be proposing a more substantial buffer tonight to help alleviate that concern.
Okay.
Wouldn't that come under, I mean, as he just alluded, that's, that's going to, that could be a major health concern to the children and pets and adults that live in that area, spraying crops right next door to them all year long.
I, I think it's a valid concern. I, I think that, I, I think that Mr. Winslow makes a great point, we need to do a better job of getting more significant buffers between residential properties and farmland. We, we don't have that in our ordinance right now. I think you, as a board, under the special use permit process, have the ability to enact or require a buffer if you think that's adequate, if you feel there's a, particularly if you feel there's a public health or safety reason that goes along with it.
Mr. Chairman, it is noted on plats now that when the subdivision locates next to an operational farm, that it's noted on all the-
It is.
Lot descriptions that you are locating next to a working farm operation.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. John Bowman, please give your name and address for the record also.
Good evening, John Bowman, 159 Greenview Road in Mooyaw. I am currently the president of Eagle Creek Home Association. Excuse me. I came here tonight to talk about the wastewater plant, and when they first proposed the original plans to the board, the home association board, they were quite different. In the section where the wastewater plant was, there were similar homes and also a, excuse me, playground. And then I went on the site, Currituck County site, and I found the plans that you have now, which now is our wastewater plant. The concern we had was, we have our own wastewater plant, of course, at Eagle Creek, and if I have my druthers, I'd rather have them hook up to that, because as you all know, if you have a wastewater plant, you're going to have some kind of odor somewhere when the wind blows just right. And with that plant being right behind the Eagle Creek residents, it would just be an additional crossfire between what we have and what they got, so to speak. Now, I was assured by the representatives that the, it'd be stated the art wastewater treatment plant, and that probably the smell or whatever, the odor would not be present at, you know, 90% of the time. So at the current time, Eagle Creek Home Association doesn't have any problem with granting access for their Sorry County Road crossways, but if they, like I said, if we had our druthers, we'd rather have them hook into our, our plant and not build our own.
So Eagle Creek has no objections to him hooking into your wastewater treatment system, is what you're saying?
No, at the current time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gary Werner, please also give your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Gary Werner. I live at 314 49th Street in Virginia Beach. I am the president of Franciscus Homes. Several weeks ago, as you know, this matter came before the planning board, and we were unable to gain their support for approval. In hindsight, I regret that I didn't take an opportunity and speak with them, because I felt, I feel like I offer a, a little bit better perspective on some of the requested changes. As you know, the developer already has plan approval for 146 lot community, South Ridge. What you may not know is that Franciscus Homes, as the proposed purchaser of those lots, is really the driving force in the recommended changes that are before you this evening. Franciscus has been looking for an opportunity in Currituck for some time. When we looked at the South Ridge location, it was clear that you couldn't find a better spot to create a new home community. But what wasn't as clear was that the land plan may not be as suitable as we would like to see to serve one of our neighborhoods and our homeowners. We asked the developer to consider making several changes. Those changes were, first, to remove the lots that were located behind the wastewater treatment plant and the high tension lines at the back of the property. We had no interest in building on those 26 lots, and suggested an alternate plating that would bring all of those 146 lots into the main community around the lake and abutting the golf course. We thought it was a, a much better plan. It had the benefit, of course, of reducing some of the road lengths, and, and also did a better job of, of unifying the neighborhood. In order to accommodate that plating, we had to slightly reduce the size of the lots, obviously. They're currently now a little bit more than 8,000 square feet, and frankly, a little bit better or more appropriate scale to the proposed house types that we envisioned there. Houses that we propose are three and four bedroom homes that are ranging in size from about 1,800 to 2,400 square feet. Those homes, we currently build in Islewhite County on 55-foot lots with about 15 to 18 feet between houses. They present themselves very well to the street and I think are appropriately scaled in this new proposed plan with patio lots. We also thought that we could do, or the developer could do, a better job of aligning the road, entry road to Survey Road. I think that was also part of a recommendation from NC DOT, and it had a better sense of arrival for the community. It gives you good sightlines into the water feature and the fountains, and we think marketed the property better. Lastly, we asked the developer to consider removing the requirement for four parking spaces in the driveway in addition to the garage parking. We proposed instead that we agree to two spaces in the driveway behind the rightway, and then the two spaces in the garage also accommodate a street profile that would be friendlier for the occasional on-street parking. I believe that the parking, at the planning board meeting, the parking was a particularly hot topic. There were concerns, I think, by some of the board members that South Ridge may share some of the parking issues that are experienced in Eagle Creek, but I'll point out that the street, the proposed street profile in South Ridge is 27 feet, and the street profile in Eagle Creek is 20 feet. With sidewalks on both sides of the street at South Ridge and the wider street profile, I think that we could still have occasional on-street parking and accommodate emergency access safely for the residents. From our perspective as home builders in particular, it didn't seem to make sense to take 20 feet of good recreation area out of the backyards and put it in the front yards. And I believe that the plan we're proposing addresses those concerns. I'll point out as well that South Ridge does not have any through traffic the way that Eagle Creek does to the golf course. If we're fortunate enough to earn your vote on the, for approval, I'd, I'd really urge you to allow us the two spaces in the driveway as opposed to four. Before I turn the podium over to Mark and let him address some of the technical concerns from the developer's perspective. We did meet briefly tonight with Mr. Winslow and assured him that we would work with staff on an alternate plan for the buffer. One of the suggestions we had is to allow us to pull our pedestrian walks a little bit closer to the rear of the lots, and then rather than to do a type C buffer, to maybe go back to more of a natural forested type of buffer, that over the years would develop into a more dense hedge and tree combination, which may serve his concerns a little bit better. That's something we would be happy to work with staff on to see if we could come up and develop a better plan. I'll, I'll, I want to close by saying that Franciscus is a well-established builder in the Hampton Roads market with a 35-year history of quality and excellence in customer service and a reputation for honest dealing, not only with our homeowners and our subcontractors and vendors, but also with our municipal partners on the county and city level. We, we look at South Ridge as an opportunity for us to start a, a very effective relationship with the county and with its taxpayers, and look to create a better business environment and maybe also some, some jobs as well as we get this thing rolling. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Want to have any questions? If not, we'll call on Mr. Bissell.
Mr. Chairman, I primarily wanted to just provide a little bit more technical information to address the planning board concerns. We have a couple of exhibits there. The first concern was traffic, and I'd like to just point out that we did have a very detailed traffic impact analysis and report prepared that we, that our traffic consultant, who was well-respected by NC DOT, provided to the Department of Transportation. Their traffic engineers reviewed that report and have occurred in the, in the recommendations. And what we're showing in this exhibit is kind of a summary of the roadway improvements that are being made in order to improve traffic safety as a result of the additional traffic that the project will, will generate. And that includes realigning the entranceway, providing both left and right turns at the entrance, providing a deceleration lane that the traffic can get off of the main road as they're slowing down to make a right turn. The same kind of deceleration and stacking for the right turn at coming, going north on Survey Road to the 168 intersection in order to, again, get traffic off of the main travelway and facilitate those right-hand turns. Additionally, there are turning lanes and some restricted left turn lanes at, at the commercial entrances, and all of those recommendations have been accepted by DOT and will be incorporated into the final construction plans. So we think that the traffic concern has been adequately addressed. The second issue was the parking spaces, and as Mr. Werner indicated, the plan that we're proposing does provide essentially two times the UDO required parking, and in addition, we actually modified the, the street section and the type of curb in order to be able to accommodate the occasional on-street parking for overflow parking and up parking. As you can see in this detail, that is a, a standard full-size vehicle parked that still has a 20-foot clearance for, for two-way traffic to pass it safely. And so I do believe that we have adequately addressed the parking with, again, two times the UDO requirement in the driveway plus overflow parking available on the street. Thirdly, there was a concern about the Eagle Creek connection possibly opening up additional land for development, but as Mr. Woody stated, well, first of all, there, there are no plans at, at the present time for development back there. We think that this project really can be successful as, as it stands. If there ever was an, an opportunity to do something additional in the back, we would be required to, of course, submit an application for a new special use permit, and this board would have the, the ability to approve or deny that, that request. So we think that the traffic concern has been adequately addressed. The second issue was the parking spaces and as Mr. Warner indicated, the plan that we're proposing does provide essentially two times the UDO required parking. And in addition, we actually modified the, the street section and the type of curb in order to be able to accommodate the occasional on-street parking for overflow parking and up parking. As you can see in this detail, that is a, a standard full-size vehicle parked that still has a 20-foot clearance for, for two-way traffic to pass it safely. And so I do believe that we have adequately addressed the parking with again, two times the UDO requirement in the driveway plus overflow parking available on the street. Thirdly, there was a concern about the Eagle Creek connection possibly opening up additional land for development. But as Mr. Woody stated, well, first of all, there, there are no plans at the present time for development back there. We think that this project really can be successful as it stands. If there ever was an, an opportunity to do something additional in the back, we would be required to of course, submit an application for a new special use permit and this board would have the, the ability to approve or deny that, that request. Then the other concerns that have been raised since the planning board meeting or, and at the planning board meeting, Mr. Winslow of course has a concern, a legitimate concern about the buffering. And as Mr. Warner indicated, we did meet with Mr. Winslow. Just to give you a picture of the, of the buffer that we have, we have a, a buffer that ranges from the backs of the lots to the common property line with, with the farm that ranges in width from 36 feet at the narrowest spot to over 90 feet at the wider areas. And this is the same buffer that, that exists on the, same buffer width that exists with the current special use permit. However, we do recognize the need to provide a denser vegetative buffer in, in that area. So what we are doing is Mr. Warner indicated is moving the, the swale that is behind, runs behind the lots and the multi-use path as close as we can get it to the lots. And then we're going to propose to provide vegetation within all of the rest of that buffer between the multi-use path and, and the property line. And again, we would be meeting with staff and Mr. Winslow to select the right kind of vegetation that will, that will address that concern. We're certainly willing to have that place as a condition on the approval. Finally, as Mr. Bowman indicated, the Eagle Creek preference would be to connect the wastewater system to the existing Eagle Creek wastewater treatment facility and we hope to be able to accommodate that request. And there's every indication that we will be able to accommodate that in the event that, that it does not work out. We have shown the preliminary design of a state-of-the-art treatment facility that would have all of the safeguards built in to, to address any concerns with operation odors, et cetera. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Question time.
What subdivision that you did that looks almost exactly like that, say, Mark?
I can't think of one.
Mr. Gregor?
Mark, I would, I would, I would get this, the commissioners to turn to page 45 if they will in their agenda book. And I guess the thing that turns, concerns me about this is Mike Dox's review of the seasonal high water table. And they're proposing to fill it to 12 inches for the building pads. Mike feels like it should be raised 18 inches at the very minimum. Says the streets may be okay at 12. You know, these homes are going to be built on slabs. And I don't, I, I, I really don't think there ought to be any building on slabs in the Moayak area due to flooding, due how prone it is to flooding and what have you. But the way the soils are in this area, I would certainly recommend to the board that, that they at least go by Mike Dox's recommendations on this and include them in this application. Because I don't, I don't want to see these people move in homes with these pads down low and I, and all of us know how bad the flooding is in the Moayak area and these people get flooded out before they ever get started. But I would certainly recommend that we at least go by Mike Dox's recommendation. He has forgotten more about water in Moayak than most others know. That would be my recommendation.
Let me say that a couple of our engineers have met with Mike since the, the TRC report came out and further discussed this. And based on that meeting, you know, there was an agreement to, to raise it based on a downstream analysis that will be performed as part of the, the final permitting and pre-construction review. And so based on that commitment, Mike did change his recommendation to approval based on the, the commitment to provide that analysis and meet those, those conditions.
So you, you're willing to do what, whatever Mike's recommendation is?
We are.
So far as the raising of the pads?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mark, is the, is the difference in the, the road, it was touched by the difference is 20 foot to Eagle Creek and 27 foot here. But Eagle Creek doesn't have any curb gutter or sidewalk. And it has a, it still has a major drainage problem. Is the curb gutter going to alleviate some of that drainage problem?
Well, what we have here is, is this five-acre lake that actually will, will accommodate, I believe it is between three and four times the, the stormwater that the state requires to be retained and well in excess of, of the county's 10-year storm requirement. I think it'll accommodate more like a 25-year storm. So that, that's the big difference. It's, has less to do with the, the street section than, than with the, the opportunity to, to store and retain that water on site. In addition, the planning board had a, had a concern about the slopes of that, of that lake. And we did present at the planning board meeting a cross-section of that that shows that from a distance of about two feet above the water level to a distance of two feet below the water level, we have a very gradual slope of about one foot and 10. And then going up from that one and 10 slope to the backs of the lots, it's even flatter than that. So, so not only is it a safe design, it, it actually will accommodate well over the design storm as well as being a recreational feature and, and aesthetic vista across the site.
Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Mark, you talk about downstream. Where, where is exactly downstream? Where, where does the, where does the stormwater run from the pond?
It runs down Survey Road under 168, then eventually down along the Harkam Farm and out to, but the stream that runs along Mac Jones Road.
And that's sufficient shape to handle the capacity?
Well, that's what the downstream analysis is going to indicate. What, if anything, needs to be done to that, to that existing outfall?
I've got just a couple of questions. You say that you're going to have occasional on-street parking and I want the gentleman from Eagle Creek, he can probably clarify this. You do not in your homeowner association, you do not allow on-street parking, is that correct?
That is correct.
If you're going to allow occasional street parking, you're always going to have street parking on there, just one thing. My next question is, because this was brought up also, is what's going to, what are your plans for the space for your wastewater treatment facility if in fact you do hook onto Eagle Creek?
Well, the initial plan would be to possibly be storing clay soils that they come from the, from the lake excavation back there. We, we have no plans beyond that.
How deep can you say the pond, you say the pond's five acres long?
Yes.
How deep, is, is that the, the grade it's going to be at the, all the way around the whole pond? Slate?
Very slight all the way around. Yes, sir.
How deep is it in the deepest part?
It, it could be quite deep. We haven't finalized that yet. It'll be based on a final cut and fill analysis that will be based on the report that's going to be forthcoming from the geotechnical engineer. We'll try to balance the cut and fill on the site in order to not have to haul any material in.
I know those homes look like they're right up on the pond. When you look at those old pictures, it doesn't look like as much slack in the back of those homes on the pond.
We typically have, I think, a about 75 to 100 feet of buffer between the backs of the lots and in the lake. You have more than a lot with a, a buffer.
Yes, sir.
My understanding is the preliminary plat, this is an amended sketch plan, I mean, a preliminary plat plan, correct?
That's correct.
So they already have the right to build what is being asked to amend it tonight?
Yeah, they have the right to build 146 units. What they're doing is just redesigning the site basically, but no, it, it doesn't necessarily increase the density. And actually, in, in the, in the pond, the idea of the pond in the middle, that was in the original preliminary plat. So it's not, it's not a great departure from the original preliminary plat.
Do you think this is a better plan than what they originally presented?
I think it's similar. I, I think the, the one thing that's interesting to me about it as a planner is, is they're trying to create kind of a sense of scale along, on the street there. I mean, you'll have a pretty walkable community, which is kind of unique for Currituck County. So I don't know that it's better, but it's certainly equivalent to.
But it's not worse.
I wouldn't say it's worse, no.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, you may know this, or maybe a question for Mr. McCree. Regarding notification of prospective purchasers or residents in an area like this of the fact that there's an active farming operation nearby, we assume that they take notice of the fact, but obviously they're not. Are there any requirements that any of the materials used to represent this neighborhood actually spell out the conditions and the possible, I hate to say hazards, but let's say the potential adverse health situations that may result from aerial application of various pesticides, fertilizers and things like that?
No, no, sir. The only requirement we have is, is a note that goes in the final plat. So if your question is, do we require the real estate agent or the, or the folks at market to, to do that or provide that information? No, we don't. I guess as a homeowner, you'd have to look at the plat to realize there was a, that kind of potential. Or I guess look at the farm beside you and realize there was that kind of potential.
Now, my concern basically, I think is probably very much the same as Mr. Winslow's. I think he's made a valid point. Obviously, he doesn't want to have a lot of bad feelings from the residents by operating an active farming situation there. And I'm aware of, for instance, of new research talking about the long-term effects of things like glyphosate, which is, round up as a generic product like that as far as the, the health conditions that can be caused by that by prolonged or repeated exposure, particularly with children. And I know for myself, I would not want to live next to an active farming operation. But I see the buffer that's outlined here really isn't much different than what's behind Greenview in Eagle Creek. So, you know, we're not really talking about creating a new hazard. I just have a concern that, you know, maybe we should look at addressing that sometime in the future.
I, I agree. I think our buffer is a shortcoming and for whatever it's worth, it doesn't help us tonight necessarily, but we've asked the consultants, the writing ordinance, to take a hard look at compatibility between not just farming and residential uses, but compatibility between all uses and do a better job with our buffering standards. So we, we have requested that and are working on that.
I appreciate, I know Franciscus has an excellent reputation. Maybe you would consider when you're developing this, if it does go forward to really beefing up that buffer with some, you know, heavy foliage and, and things that grow fairly quickly to protect the, the neighborhood against any kind of blow-by from those types of applications.
All right. I have one comment, Mr. Woody, that we've discussed before. It's really something we need to address in the future as well, is this open space that's set aside for these homeowners associations. It needs to be encouraged that somewhere in our ordinance said it's reforested with pine trees, hardwoods, whatever, so it takes the burden off the homeowners of having to mow that grass. I believe Mr. Rohr has brought an example where it cost a homeowners association, how much was it at?
About $60,000 a year.
$60,000 a year to mow the grass.
That's at River's Edge.
At River's Edge, just to the south of us, north of us. That's a tremendous burden on the homeowners and that's something that we need to address in the future. And then I'll, I'll, this, my, this comment has nothing to do with approval. It just has to do with the state of things. Every time we have a Virginia developer come into North Carolina, they bring their own work crews in. And I would encourage Mr. Warner to remember that there's a lot of skilled craftsmen right here in Currituck County that could do an excellent job with whatever's done if, if this proposal does in fact go forward. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Woody the same question I asked Mark Bissell. Isn't there a subdivision just like this that we did in the last three years in the same Moayak, right next to the barn at Moayak comes out on 168?
I can't, I can't remember.
In North Ridge? That was.
Is that the same design as North Ridge?
I don't, there was a subdivision, I know that's still there, but I don't think anything's been done with it.
Right past the bank of Currituck?
No, this side, towards the state line. Maybe I'm just.
There was one up there. I can't remember what it was.
We approved, we approved one.
I think it just disappeared. I don't know whatever happened to that.
Well, there ain't but so many places it could be hidden from the state line coming south. First opening was.
It was right there where we looked at the, the complex, where we want to build the big complex.
Between graveyard and a barn you're talking about.
Yeah, I know what you're, I know what you're talking about.
It might have just been a sketch plan or something. It was something presented.
Actually, it didn't even get to the sketch plan stage. It was just a, just a zoning text amendment that I think was being discussed with a, with a what might be kind of plan, but that did not move forward.
All right. Does anyone else have any other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to yield to the commissioner from Moayak.
With that said, I have a lot of concerns where that sits on the road. And I'm just, like I said, concerned at Eagle Creek at Sawyer, or Survey Road, the school that's there, that's going to be a lot of traffic in that intersection. And trying to look out for those drainages is a very, very big issue. We've been dealing with that, looking out for like nine months in Moayak. And Eric Weatherly and Mike Doxey and I have traveled most of those in Moayak and the majority of them need improving. And because of my hesitation, I would move to deny based on what was the proposal is not in harmony with the surrounding area due to the small light size and it's inconsistent with the rule classification of 2006 land use plan and duly noted what has been recorded here tonight.
Can we have a motion for denial from Commissioner Taylor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Nelms. Any further discussion? I have a, Mr. Woody, I'm going to put you on the spot. Under what basis does this subdivision not meet the unified development ordinance? That would allow a denial.
In the special use permit process, there's, there's seven criteria that you have to make as a board of commissioners. One of those being consistency with the land use plan, which Ms. Taylor referenced that. And the other is, is consistency with, or harmony with the general area. So I would say she's, may, Mr. McCree, you could help me, but I think she's made a proper motion for denial.
Yes, ma'am. What I'm hearing is that she, she is making a motion based upon evidence that's presented to her both orally and in, in the materials provided to, to the board for this case. Again, her motion and belief based upon the evidence presented that she, she doesn't believe this board can make a finding that it is in harmony with the land use plan and the, the other secondary portion of the motion.
So when it was granted approval in 2006 and '07, the land use plan was disregarded? When it was granted approval? If it's not in harmony with it now, was it in harmony with it then? I wasn't on the board at that time, but four of the folks up here were. I wasn't on the board at that time, but four of the folks up here were.
I wasn't.
I was the planning director when it was originally approved, so I'm not sure.
Mr. McCray, this does not take away their right to develop it as it sits today, does it?
No, it doesn't.
No, that's correct. I mean, my understanding is there is already an approved preliminary plat under which the advocate may act and move forward with regard to construction of that plat as has been previously approved.
Her motion simply denies the amendment.
This denies the amendment to that plat.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
No. Okay, the motion did not carry. Mr. McCray, I will defer to you. Is it proper for a substitute motion?
Would not be a substitute motion, it's just now the opportunity for a commissioner to make any motion they may desire relative to this case.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to leave as was, just leave it as it was.
That's what I just did.
That's what Janet's motion was.
I thought her motion was, no, I mean, leave it as it was before this amendment hit.
That's what her motion was to do.
That's what her motion was for denial.
I thought we were denying the new deal.
You did. That was the motion to deny the changes.
This amended motion, that this amended plat.
Right.
Well, I would make a motion to go back and leave it as it was before the amended amendment went in.
That's what we just voted on, and it did not carry.
I ain't in a state of confusion, I thought you...
I have a question, too, because of that aesthetic confusion, I think, I think our concerns probably are that we feel there are some conditions that need to be satisfied for this plan, although we recognize that this plan probably is more attractive and more workable than the original. So the question would be, how could we incorporate into this, by the developers, the center, whatever, the things that we have concerns about, which would be, I think, perhaps the water table, the elevations of the homes, my concern about the bufferage against the farming action, and some of the traffic considerations? That's a lot of conditions for us to pile into our motion on top of what's here. Is that an appropriate form, or should we send it back to the drawing board?
Well, certainly, what you are doing tonight in the form of a motion, you're ultimately making findings a fact, which can be in a motion related to, as presented through the oral testimony and the record that's before you. But as part of that, you are also adding any conditions that are reasonably related to the use of the property that you want to see added to the special use permit. Now, you have in your agenda package before you a number of recommended conditions made by staff and the planning board, but you may also add, you may delete from those, you may add additional conditions that you leave, again, are reasonably related to the use of this particular piece of property. So to the extent that you want to try to add conditions and draft that language at this point, you certainly may do that. Another option may be to table it, and as you give staff some direction, the type of condition you might like to actually see in writing before you to act on in the near future.
I think I'd like to move in that direction, Mr. Chairman.
One thing I'd like to ask Mr. Woody is, do we have a copy of as it was before it was amended tonight available to us?
I certainly have a paper copy here, and if, I could probably pull up the electronic copy if you gave me a minute or two.
Well, it just seems like it would be appropriate if you're talking...
Comparing apples to apples.
Just a few changes in the lots versus what was there before.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Now, I ask this question.
Yes, sir.
If we left it standing as it is, if already approved, then the noted improvements that the planning board would like to have seen addressed, that Mr. Bissell and Mr. Werner have pointed out here tonight, would not be decasing, would it? They could go ahead and develop without those issues being addressed.
Some of the issues, yeah, I mean, we haven't adequately addressed the buffer between Mr. Winslow's farm.
How about the elevation? That was not a part of the previous approval, was it?
I think Mike probably has some leeway to really push him on that regardless of what happens here, because once it leaves this political approval process, it goes into, they have to submit fully engineered drawings, and I do think Mike has some leeway to account for the flood issues. So I think that Mike can probably address that.
Well, let me ask you this, let me ask you this, Woody. Let me ask you one more question. He's got a right to develop it as it stood before we come here tonight, is that right?
That's correct.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, while I do, just to go back to that, and wipe out what you did, what's on the agenda, what?
Well, that was Mrs. Taylor's motion, was to deny this amendment to what was already approved, Mr. President.
I know, I'm saying that, but what I'm talking about, he had a right to build what was already approved. Her motion was to not, to deny the amendment concerning that. But he already had the right to build.
No, sir, it was to deny the right to change what had already been approved.
That's right, that's right. But he still got, yeah. That's right, but that would still leave him the right to build as it was approved.
He still has that right.
Yeah. That's all I was trying to say.
They're saying, the new amendment is better because...
Woody said, he thinks it's a draw, is what he said while I go. He couldn't see no good or bad or worse either.
So we don't address the buffer issue that Mr. Winslow brought up, the what's all that...
Well, I think that needs to be addressed. I certainly think that needs to be addressed, but...
And the elevation piece, too, that you brought up.
And the elevation piece certainly needs to be addressed, but it was not addressed in the very beginning, so actually, I don't guess we could, I don't guess we could force them to do it now, or can't force them to do it.
Not unless you approve the amendment.
Not unless that is approved, you know. Well, what I'm trying to say, if you turn the whole thing down, don't approve the amendment and nothing, you still have the right to go forth, or what?
With what was approved in 2007.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak again?
Yes. Bring some clarity before we move.
One of the things that, that the plan that's approved now...
Wait, well, I closed the public hearing.
Well, if you intend to add any additional evidence to the record upon which you may base your decision, I would suggest that you reopen the evidentiary phase, which we call the practice of public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reopen the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Idlet. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I was, wanted to point out that one of the key differences between the old plan and the new plan is that the old plan had a mixture of 10,000 square foot lots and 5,000 square foot lots. And all the lots in the back section were 5,000 square feet, and there was a concern about, about building on those small lots, that it would be a different type of housing product, and it would be separated from the rest of the community. Whereas with the new plan, with all those lots integrated into the main loop road around the lake, instead of having some 10,000 and some 5,000 square foot lots, our typical, our average lot size is now 8,700 square feet. We think it just provides a nicer community, it's all, it's all integrated together, it's a nice walking scale, everybody has immediate access to the lake, to the recreational amenities that are being developed around the lake. The streetscape is nicer, if we could go back to that slide for a second. The streetscape that you see on the bottom, it's basically, it's the same type of house, but the placement of that house and the spacing is more appropriate to the scale of the house, and we have still the same number of houses, but we have a more appropriate spacing and lot size and access to all the amenities and a better sense of community. I think that's really the biggest advantage to the new plan.
Well, I looked at that, and I looked at Mr. West and the planning board comments had concern that 8,000 foot was too small. And now we've reduced that to 5,000 foot, and when you go back and look, you had 60 foot between the houses, and now you've got 12 foot between the houses. And so we've really, looking at the proposed amendment to what was approved, it's not just the roads and moving the sewer, it's the size of the lots, and it's the space in between the houses, which Mr. Woody did not elaborate on. Because we're, you know, I picked that up from your conversation and from other testimony, and I mean, 12 foot between two houses is, in my opinion, is not good.
Can I address that?
Yes. I think it's very nice, 12, 12 to 15 foot in these.
Well, first, yeah, the minimum lot size in the existing approved plan is 5,000 square feet, and the minimum lot size in this plan is 8,100 square feet. So we're actually increasing the minimum lot size by almost 3,000 feet. And we are maintaining a minimum 20-foot separation between houses. And because they, and we don't have the roadway swales, and everything is draining to the big lots in the back, we don't need the kind of separation between houses to have big side yard swales, because it's all, we've got small amounts of water going down all through the community, it's more of a sheet flow effect with some very gradual swales. So 20 feet between the houses is more than adequate for the kind of grading and drainage plan we have.
So I'm looking at the old plat, and basically what you've done is you've just moved some lots from over here to over here, but it's basically the same design, and you've increased lot size from the 5,000 to up to 8,000, that's a, that's a very significant, correct?
That's correct.
And you've addressed the lot elevations.
Buffering.
And the buffering, and...
And has a right now to...
Do it without that, and you've addressed the street parking.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right.
Is it 30 foot, is it 60 foot between each home?
It was 30 feet on the old plan, it's 20 feet on this one.
I know, in Mr. West's statement here, it says 8,000, Mr. West stated that 8,000 square foot lots are small, the type of soil you have, only having 60 foot between each home is tight, so they're saying you have 60 foot, 30 foot on each lot, is that...
Now, we've typically got a 60-foot wide lot with a 40-foot...
He's a front of lot width.
Is that what it is? I know you've got 60 foot between each home.
All right.
But the lot's is 8,000, too, it went from 5 to 8.
Well, we need to...
Yeah, 8,100 is the absolute minimum.
We need to make a decision. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board to make a decision.
I'd like to offer another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move to approve PVO 710 with the findings of fact and staff recommendations, including the case analysis, with the additional conditions that the minimum slab elevations be increased to 18 inches above grade, and that there be a heavily foliated buffer created between the farming activity and the residential subdivision, and that a positive solid barrier be created there, either by fencing or some other mechanism, which will keep the children, the animals, and other things out of the farming area.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Rohr.
I'll second that.
Good second, for Mr. Idlet. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of modified golf cart ordinance. Mr. McCray?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, as I said during the public comment time, this ordinance is back before you for your consideration, following comments made at your last meeting and further conversation with the Sheriff's Department. I would first of all like to note that it has not been changed on the copy that's before you, but I would suggest, as I did in the public comment time, that in Section 12-64 definitions, the highway definition in the last sentence be modified by adding, by rewriting it to read the terms, quote, highway, and then adding the word, quote, road, adding the word, quote, words, public vehicle area, and street, and their cognets are synonymous, and that will cover the issues regarding the private roads that I addressed during the public comment time. The other modifications made since your last meeting, first of all, incorporated the sheriff's comments that were presented to you at the last meeting into this draft, and so what appears, and hopefully it did appear to you and read in the, this currently modified version, is first of all, a new Section 12-66 entitled Designation of Public Streets for Operational Golf Carts. And as I said during the public comment time, that is the section in which I attempted to address the concerns raised during the course of the last meeting, that we just not opened this up upon adoption of an ordinance to every street and road in the county, but yet we have some way to essentially customize the ordinance and have it fit in each community as this board may see fit. So the idea was, because there are some communities that have a property owners' association, some that don't, some people that don't live in a residential subdivision per se, but maybe live on a road out in the middle of nowhere, although the street speed limit is 35 miles per hour or less, and they would be allowed to ride a golf cart if this ordinance were adopted. I proposed that upon receipt of a petition signed by 67% of residents and/or property owners in an area to be designated by another ordinance of this board as a golf cart area, that they could then present that petition and proceed on with the possibility of an ordinance designing the streets and roads in the area in which golf carts could be operated. Speaking with Commissioner Rohr today, he was suggesting, I think, kind of a bifurcated process, that there would be an opportunity for those who live within a property owners' association, if I understand the commissioner correctly, to have that property owners' association petition this board, and I would say by resolution, adopted by that property owners' association members. And then for those who don't live within an area that is under this, under or subject to the jurisdiction of a property owners' association, they would proceed under this other option of presenting a petition of, again, it can be 67% or whatever percent you want, but a certain percentage of those persons living within the area would be designated as an area in which golf carts may be operated on the streets. Before we get into discussing that, the next modification made was to address your concerns that golf carts only be operated during daylight hours, so if you're going down to line 32 on page two of the proposed ordinance, you'll see the language stricken out that previously would have allowed, under certain circumstances, for golf carts to be operated after daylight hours. And then proceeding on to page three, the ordinance is page 49 of your, of your agenda book, line 22, paragraph 15, this was to address Commissioner Rohr's concern that, and interest that there are persons who evidently utilize golf carts now in certain residential subdivisions to tow a jet ski down to the water. So that added language would allow for that possibility with, on public streets located in a residential subdivision that is within the boundary of an area designated for operation of golf carts on public streets. So again, it could only be done if that particular residential subdivision had been petitioned and designated by this board as an area in which you could operate golf carts on the streets. Added a new, paragraph 16 there at line 27, that would make it clear that golf carts may not be operated on North Carolina Highway 12, except for the sole purpose of crossing Highway 12 at a perpendicular crossing, at a through intersection, to address the concern that we not have golf carts and traffic stacked up on Highway 12, particularly in summertime in Corolla. And that were, those are all the modifications that were made since the last meeting.
Didn't we talk about the road, Papa Branch Road where Mr. Nelms lives, that there's sections in there where it says 35 miles an hour, that may not be totally appropriate for a golf cart to be going down that highway?
Well, again, I could not recall exactly, because I think a number of roads that maybe were mentioned at last meeting that may not be appropriate at all for golf carts to operate upon, no matter, no matter what the speed limit might be. And so I would suggest if you wanted to add additional roads to exclude...
Bring those back.
Or either now or in the future, add them to this paragraph 16 along with NC Highway 12.
Okay. Mr. Idlet, do you have a question?
A place like that a match, I mean, the subdivisions are numerous over there, so each subdivision would have to have a petition of 67% of the people to just cross the road? each subdivision would have to have a petition of 67% of the people to just cross the road?
No, 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 no. What that would provide for is, and this kind of goes back to what Commissioner Etheridge was kind of describing, that the county has the authority to create lease districts, and could we maybe do something to create, you know, golf cart operation district? And so, that's kind of the concept, that you could have a coming together of persons who determine that they want to see a certain area and the streets within that area designated and allow, and allow for the use of golf carts. It would be that, the 67% of the persons within that area to be defined in the petition coming before you with the request.
Okay, and well, each individual homeowners association over there, or development, would have to petition to start with, to be able to use the golf cart in that subdivision, so that would-
Take care of that.
That, well, that again is what Commissioner Rohr and I discussed before the meeting, for those, for those subdivisions that have a property owners association, but-
How do we determine, determine, I mean, who knows which subdivisions have property owners associations? I mean, like in Knights Island, for instance, I don't have a clue.
You're the mayor.
Well, the mayor don't know.
I would suggest that it would be up to those petitioning this body to set forth under what the two processes they're proceeding, and if they are claiming to be a property owners association, that they produce for you evidence that a property owners association exists in their subdivision, which could be restrictive covenants, for example, that have been recorded.
The 67% is a standard thing for modifying the covenants and declarations of most subdivisions, so I would suggest really to keep it from being such an onerous task that if a homeowners association is present, let them use whatever method they normally do to poll and form consensus their members, and have them petition. Otherwise, maybe make it a simple majority, as opposed to find a 67%. I know most of these homeowners associations are lucky, they get five people to show up for a meeting, much less two-thirds of them to go to a meeting.
Well, that's exactly my concern, because if you do that, if you let the property owners association do that, and you have 3% of the people that are living in a neighborhood petition for this, and they come up here, then you don't have the wishes and the desires of the residents or the property owners.
Yeah, but they gain their luck.
No, they can't blame us, but you're left with a problem, and that's, that's what exists in a number of subdivisions in this county. That's why I personally prefer just keeping it at the 67%. If it's 67% of the persons, if they don't have a property owners association, or if it's 67% of a combination of the property owners and residents association, which is, was the scenario Mr. McCray gave, gave me last week, then to me, that's, we've included, we'd have included everybody, but you're exactly right, you got, you got 1% of the people telling the other 99% of the people what the property owners association is going to do, and that's, that's against the 67%.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but my experience with it has been that typically, most of them just don't care, that's why they don't show up. It's not that they're against it, they just don't have enough interest to get out of vote, and therefore, nothing would ever happen. Of course, I know, you know, you expressed your dissatisfaction with this entire concept of having golf carts out there.
No, not at all. I haven't, I don't have any, I'm, I'm not in discord with that at all, and as I said in the last time, I support it. I support it for the people in the neighborhoods that want it, and 1% of the, of a population in a subdivision is, is not a sufficient number, I think, for us to consider allowing this in.
Mr. Etheridge.
Mr. McCray, does this apply to subdivisions that the streets are owned by the homeowners association and not under state maintenance agreements?
Well, that will see, the reason for adding and making clear that public vehicular access areas would be included. Those types of streets meet the definition of, under the Chapter 20 of the general statutes, and as I said during public comment time, are streets in areas on which the sheriff's department does enforce motor vehicular law to some extent, particularly with regard to the driving while impaired and careless and reckless statute.
You could, you could get 67% of the people in Waterby Shores without, if they wanted it, and I don't know that they do it now, but you got 67% of the people in that property owners association could come in in a due period of time and sign a petition if they want it, we would consider it and approve it. But you've got, in Wallon Island, you've got three or four different factions working in there, because you have, what Mr. Etheridge was leading to, you have the private streets and the camper sections, which are not part of this section, which are not part of the sewer section, which is not part of the property owners association, and you have three entirely different entities that are all, I want this, I don't want that, or whatever it is.
Well, the one other situation we need to be aware of or reinforce, that the vehicles licensed as low speed vehicles, which is a motor vehicle category in North Carolina, which is a street legal golf cart, I'm sure you've seen them all advertised, they cost a little more, but this particular ordinance does not apply to those at all. They can be legally operated anywhere that speed limit's 35 miles an hour or less, day or night. So, it's not going to stop the situation with having this type of vehicle out there, it's just going to make the people who want to do it pay $1,000, $1,500 more to get something that's got all the safety equipment on it, which may not be a bad idea. I mean, I have no problem with that.
Mr. McCray, you and I spoke a little good about the situation up in Corova. There's people that use golf carts up there on the streets behind the dunes, I mean, so now, the Corova subdivision and all the property owners up there are going to have to be petitioned to determine whether a golf cart can be used back there, and people are riding four wheelers and other stuff, I mean-
Well, again, it's whether they're being used lawfully right now in a public vehicular access area, but certainly, they're, if adopted as drafted, it would allow for the opportunity of 67% of the property owners or, and/or residents within Corova Beach to petition this board for an ordinance allowing for the use of golf carts.
Well, you just said they're using them now, so they're using them illegally, you just fronted them?
No, they're not using them illegally.
See, that's kind of a unique situation, probably don't apply nowhere else again.
Exactly.
They were already familiar with four wheelers up there, and they don't have to do that, so that, that would just be a unique situation, and you'd have to address that by itself.
I can pretty much guarantee you that all these subdivisions that are applying for it to be made legal already have the same thing going on, too, because I know they're all over Bell's Island and Watersides, couldn't leave them down there, and that would be another public access, vehicular access part of it. So, you know, it's not going to stop it, the main thing is just fix it so we can regulate it.
Well, it seems that the hang up here is whether it's 67% or, or the homeowners association. If y'all need some more time to decide that, you need to continue this till the next meeting and get your ideas straight, so that we can make a motion on this.
I'll move to continue this, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to continue. We have a second?
Yes.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
No.
No.
I would, I would ask that the two no votes are the ones that need to figure out how to-
I was fully prepared to vote on it now, I didn't think we need to put it off for another two weeks. That's why I voted no.
Okay. All right.
I'll be glad to have you to receive any comments or suggestions on drafting another, another proposal for you to consider at your next meeting.
Okay, item nine is appointment to library board. I believe that's you, Mr. Nelens.
Yes, I've contacted a person, I don't know if it's due to the weather, whatever, but I've not heard back, but I would defer that to the next meeting, possibly, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. An appointment to recreation advisory board.
Mr. Bill Frieder.
And Mr. Charles McHale.
Okay, that's, is that the only two we had left?
Uh, no, I think Mr. Idlet has one.
Vance.
Mr. Williams Billy Seeger.
Okay, and that's the only three tonight?
Mr. Taylor clarified, is that Junior? One was a young man, was school sister.
It was a Moyer.
Yeah, my dad.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item 11 is consent agenda.
Mr. Fried.
Motion from Commissioner Taylor, second from Commissioner Gregory. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Commissioners report, Ms. Taylor.
I just wanted to thank you all again for letting me attend the meeting of the retreat this weekend, but I think my ears are not quite as sensitive as it was. I thought it was a good discussion, wish I'd been there, but I do appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gregory? Mr. Nelens? Mr. Etheridge?
Mr. Chairman, last week, Commissioner Gregory and I went up to Washington DC. We met Congressman Jones, Senator Hagan, Senator Burr, face to face, and they are still continuing to back Citizens of Kirtup County in opposition, opposing the OLLF, and are still wanting to do everything they can to help us with this. I thought it was a very good series of meetings.
That's good. Is that it? Mr. Rohr?
Well, at the retreat, I thought we had a very positive series of sessions. We looked at a lot of economic information, we went over the budget, which should be presented tonight, but audited to that, and Kirtup County is still in very sound fiscal condition, but the economy doesn't look good. We've seen some economic forecasts from the ODUU staff that does this exercise every year, and 2010 looks like more of the same, not as bad, but it's bad enough in 2009 that we're not optimistic. However, the county commissioners in this have determined that we're going to take some positive steps in advertising and promoting business in Kirtup County. We're going to get out more publicity, we're hoping to do some more billboards along that line, things to generate business and also to support some events that are dropping people here. So, any of you folks that have some ideas, that like to contribute, we certainly could use your help, your ideas, and your support. Thank you.
Mr. Idlet?
I have nothing.
I'd just like to thank the staff for the hours and work that they put in during the, I guess it was a snowstorm for real in the Moyer area, and then it tapered down a little less, the further south you got, but I know that a lot of our citizens don't realize the time and effort and energy and the professionalism. Mr. Scanlon showed us a live board on his computer and showed us who was doing what, and a very well-run organization, and I commend you, Mr. Scanlon, and your staff. And do you have anything to report?
I just want to make an announcement for those that might be watching this meeting tonight or in replay at Corolla. We talked about the weather, the weather has put waste management off of their schedule, and they normally collect trash on Wednesdays in Corolla. They're one day behind, and they will pick up on Thursday this week, is they trying to catch up, so for the folks that have to order in Corolla, it'll be a Thursday pickup this week.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Hearing nothing else, motion to adjourn. First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you can stay.